By pledging to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for coming. Me and you go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Guyer?
Here.
Trustee Spurling?
Here.
Trustee Bowman?
President.
Trustee Youngerman?
Here.
Trustee Merzak?
Here.
Trustee Betzinger?
Here.
And we're all here. Thank you. The first item for public participation is a public hearing for State Street Annexation Agreement between the Village of Montgomery and Juan Alcantara regarding the annexation and development at 1249 State Street. I will open the public hearing, and is there any member of the public that's here tonight would like to make comment on that specific item? All right, has anybody submitted written comments that you know of?
I'm not aware of any written comments.
And is there anybody on Zoom wishing to make any public comment? All right. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Close the public hearing on item A, move on to item B, Proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Jesse Spurling.
Thank you, President Brawley. Whereas since the awareness program began in 1985, mammography rates have more than doubled for women aged 50 and older, and breast cancer deaths have declined. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month seeks to increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection and treatment of breast cancer. And whereas many women still do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates that in the United States, more than 230,000 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year, and over 40,000 people will die. And whereas taking advantage of early detection methods such as mammography and clinical breast exams could help the breast cancer death rate drop by approximately 30%. And whereas the American Cancer Society and other organizations continue to search endlessly for a cure through vital research and to reduce the risks of breast cancer through community education. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, hereby proclaims the month of October 2022 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Village of Montgomery, and urges all women and their families to get the facts about breast cancer, supports those courageously fighting breast cancer, and honors the lives lost to this devastating disease. So appreciate the support again this year with the proclamation.
Absolutely. Is there a motion for approval?
Oh, sorry. I didn't know we had to do that. I move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. We'll make sure to get this information posted.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the last item for public participation is item C, public comment, two-minute opportunity for any member of the public. Did anybody submit anything written?
We did not receive any written or any voicemail.
Perfect. And is there anybody on Zoom wishing to make public comment? I don't see anybody. And is anybody here wishing to make public comment? Okay. All right, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Next up is the consent agenda. I'll read the five items, entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the September 26th Village Board Meeting, Accounts Payable Through October 10th, 2022, Accounts Receivable Report for September of '22, Building Report for September of '22, and the Water Production Report for September of '22.
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All right, call roll.
Trustee Merzak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes. You surprised me.
Perfect. That carries six zero. Thank you. All right, items for separate action. We have a few of these actually are kind of the same topic here. I just want to state that correctly. That would be A, B, C, and D. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Okay, A, B, C, D, and E. I'm not going to read those twice, so why don't we discuss all of those at one time? You can give your report, Sonia, and then we'll go through these one by one.
Need a first reading?
Yes.
So first item is a first reading for the approval of adopting the annexation agreement that we just held the public hearing on. This is for 1249 State Street. It's a new single-family home that's being constructed at the corner of State Street and Montgomery Road. They were issued their building permit through the county. However, the county, per their policy, said they had to connect to the village's water. Per our policy, you do need to be annexed into the village in order to tap into our water. So we are here today to annex in property for 1249 State Street. The annexation agreement does have provisions in there regarding the county closing out the permit as issued through them, as well as the timeliness of us issuing their water tap permit in order to get that service line installed. So that's the first item we have is the first reading for the ordinance adopting the annexation agreement. Separately, the Planning and Zoning Commission held their public hearing on the actual annexation, as well as rezoning and a variance that's needed for the property. They are looking to come in and be zoned R2. Again, this is in order to be able to access our water. Since this building permit was issued by the county, they don't necessarily have the same design requirements that we do. So we are in need of a variance from our design requirements as regard to facade transparency. So the front facade does meet our transparency requirements. However, they're a little bit off for their corner side, rear, and side yard, hence the need for the variance for those. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the annexation, rezoning, and variance with some conditions that are outlined in the report. They did add an additional condition that the petitioner plant two trees on the property. Since neither of the roads are technically under the village's jurisdiction, we were not requiring them to put in any street trees. However, the Plan Commission felt it would be good for them to install a couple of trees on the property itself, and the petitioner has agreed to do that. And then because we have to record the plat of annexation in the annexation, that's why you have three separate ordinances so that the annexation is a separate ordinance when we go take things to the recorder's office. So that's why the lengthy one for this one.
Okay, perfect. And is petitioner here this evening?
No, he was not able to make it.
All right, and are they generally agreeable to the street trees?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any questions for Sonia or staff?
Quick question. So is the building essentially done, ready for them to move in? These are just the last pieces for them to?
It's really just the last pieces in order to get that water tap on and then finish up some last few things and then be able to get their occupancy from the county.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, let's read through these. Item A is Ordinance 1978, authorizing the execution of annexation agreement between the village and Juan Alcantara regarding the annexation and development of 1249 State Street. First reading, any objection to putting this on consent at future meeting? Perfect. Item B this evening is recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission, PZC 2022-002, Annexation, Rezoning, and Variation for 1249 State Street, Single Family Residents.
Motion to accept. Second.
Motion and second. Are these two gentlemen? Any discussion? Call roll.
Trustee Merzak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. And then the enacting ordinance is 1981, annexing the property. This is first reading. Any objection to consent?
No.
Okay. All right, item D is Ordinance 1982, rezoning the property, 1249 State Street. This is first reading. Any objection? Consent? Okay. And lastly, Ordinance 1983, this is granting the variation to the UDO. This is for the transparency that she just discussed. It's first reading. If there's no objection, place that on consent as well. And that's that one. Move into item F is a recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission for PZC 2022-013, Special Use Amendment to the Blackberry Creek Retail Development, Plan Unit Development, and Parking Variations for Tropical Smoothie Cafe at 2001 Orchard Road. And then we have the ordinance afterwards. Sonia.
Yes, so the Planning and Zoning Commission did conduct their public hearing for this request at their meeting and recommended approval. The petitioner is proposing to open a restaurant known as Tropical Smoothie Cafe with a drive-through in the northernmost unit that's most recently been created there at the retail center. So AT&amp;T has kind of scaled back their operations. They're only taking half the unit now, leaving the northernmost unit available. So they're looking to put the drive-through there on the north side, which does face Route 30. The PUD that approved all of the Blackberry Creek Retail Development areas does prohibit drive-through windows from facing either Orchard Road, Route 30, or Mayfield Drive. So it does require an amendment to the PUD in order for them to have that drive-through window on that north side because that does face Route 30. So that is part of their request. Additionally, they need a couple of variations related to parking, one being from the stacking requirement. So stacking is required to be six for a restaurant use, and they are only providing technically two. A third one kind of hangs out a little bit into the drive aisle in the front, so technically I can't count that as a stacking space. So, but there is the ability for people to kind of line up in that drive aisle, but they do require the variance for that. The drive aisle for the drive-through meets the minimum requirements. They are providing a bypass lane, which also meets requirements. So they won't be obstructing any of the parking on the north side. That reconfiguration, though, did require the removal of some parking spaces on that north side. So they're removing about four parking spaces. With the UDO, we did adopt a maximum parking for developments. So similar, I know we had ALDI before you last year when they reconfigured their parking lot. This is a similar instance where we have a non-conforming parking lot, and because they're actually making physical changes to the parking lot, technically they're supposed to bring it into conformance. This would require them to lose, I think, about 24 spaces in order to bring it into conformance, which is, you know, a bit excessive to be said. So they're requesting a variance from that requirement so they can continue to exceed the maximum parking for that retail center. So those are the two parking variances that are needed as well for this particular development. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval. Staff did have a couple of conditions in the staff reports. Those are incorporated into the ordinance and part of their recommendation to you.
Perfect. Real quick, do they anticipate needing more than two and a half stacking spaces?
So I do have them on the line, so we can ask them. But at the public hearing, they did state that they don't think that that's going to be a major issue, but they, because they do have staffing, so you shouldn't be able to have to wait too long. But additionally, if somebody does come in with a big order, their intention is to put them over into a parking space to wait, and they'll bring the order out to them so they can keep that line moving during peak times.
Okay. I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
So is the intention for the drive-through to go and exit behind the building?
Yes.
Okay, so they're going to do that drive aisle?
They're going to do that circle.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Okay, so this is item F. This is the recommendation of the Plan Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. Call roll.
Trustee Merzak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
That carries six zero. Thank you. Item G is the enacting ordinance 1979, granting an amendment to the special use for tropical smoothie. This is first reading. Any objection to consent at a future meeting?
No.
Perfect. Not hearing any? All right. Item H this evening is a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission for PZC 2022-014, a special use for outdoor dining at the Wendy's at 1895 Douglas Road. Director App.
Yes, so Wendy's recently went through a remodel over there on Douglas Road. As part of it, they removed the solarium that was on front of the building. They've replaced that with a patio with the intention of putting outdoor dining out there. It is going to be, or it is, I should say, fenced off, so it'll have that physical separation from the drive aisle and the parking. They are maintaining an ADA pass-by walk through there, so going from the door through the outdoor dining area out to the sidewalk, that'll be maintained. That is a condition of approval. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing last Thursday and did recommend approval with that condition, and that condition is in the ordinance that's before you tonight. So outdoor dining is a special use in any of our business districts, hence the need for it, so.
Perfect. Questions? I'm going to miss the solarium because it sounds cool, and I used to eat in there when I was a kid. I'd go to the salad buffet and then take it over there. But yes.
So moved.
Perfect. That's the recommendation. H, is there a second?
Yes, second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, go ahead and me.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Merzak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Six zero. And then the enacting ordinance is item I, 1980. This is first reading. Any objection to consent? Perfect. Rolling into item J is approval of a task order with Lane Christensen Company for the rehab of well 11, the amount of $91,139. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So as the Village Board is aware, this is kind of standard practice for, in previous cases where we've done well rehabilitations, where we'll initiate a task order number one for the pulling of the pump and motor for inspection, and then followed by a relative task, a task order number two relatively soon after that report for the next steps of the process. Well number 11 is located at the corner of Ashland and River Street. Serves the central lime softening plant for potable water for the village. Currently, we are on typically a seven-year cycle for rehabilitation. So with us being eight years plus out before the conversion to Lake Michigan water, staff is recommending the approval of this well to maintain its functionality and performance to get us to that point. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Thanks, sir. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Bowman?
Yes.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
Trustee Merzak?
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And that carries six zero. Thank you. All right, the last item for separate action is item K, the approval of the purchase cost increase for a new Peterbilt 548 swap loader truck. Director Wolf.
Thank you, President Brawley. So the board may recall, in April of 20, April 26th of 2021, the Village Board approved a purchase order for a Peterbilt cab chassis along with the equipment components to go with that for a swap loader truck that was to be used for the Public Works Department for a multitude of different functions. Unfortunately, that truck was ordered in the heart of the pandemic and has caused some delays and continue to do so. Through that process, there was an additional increase that took place in December of '21 that staff was approved, able to approve per the purchasing policy that the board was made aware at that time. Additionally, now, Peterbilt is coming forth with a additional increase of roughly $17,000 on top of that price. So you see on the cover sheet attached that we've had a drastic increase in the cost of this truck. Staff has done due diligence in researching and trying to find different ways to navigate this. And unfortunately, at this time, we feel that it is the best interest of the village to continue on with this purchase. Talking with other representatives, other manufacturers, we are in no better position to cancel our order. So just to shed some light, I received a verbal quote on a comparable, different manufacturer vehicle at a higher price than what's being presented to the board tonight, and with an obvious longer lead time. So, and that is the case for multiple different manufacturers. So something that obviously we did not plan for and account on, but it is consistent in the marketplace, not only with Peterbilt but other manufacturers. And not just, we're seeing, not just seeing this on the large vehicle front, but also on the medium-duty vehicles, as well as vehicles such as UTVs and other types of equipment. So if there's any questions from the board, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
I have a question. Please explain to the board, we gave approval back in April of 2021. It's now 18 months later, and this is staff's wording, not mine. Says at the April 26, 2021 Village Board Meeting, "An approval to purchase a Peterbilt 348 was completed, and staff immediately submitted an order to JX Peterbilt for the procurement of this vehicle to be used in the Public Works Department." So why, when we immediately submitted an order for purchase, are they able to continue to raise the price?
So they have a disclaimer in the contract agreement, as well as all the manufacturers do. It's something that I've researched as well. JX Peterbilt is not the only manufacturer or dealer that has that clause in there. And again, this is unanimous across the board. This is not unique to JX Peterbilt. There are other manufacturers that are across the board implementing not only increases but surcharges as well. So it's a very unstable market right now.
Because right now, between the two cost increases, we're paying an additional $36,000 for this vehicle, which if I run my numbers, that's a little over half of a squad car. Are we going to go through another cost increase? What's the estimated time of delivery for this truck?
Right now, estimated time of delivery is June or July of this coming year, so '23.
So a little over, it'll be two years and three months, two years and four months. How do we know that this isn't going to cost us another $40,000?
We don't. What we'll do is, like we've done throughout the process and as these increases have come along, we'll evaluate our options with canceling our order, moving to a different manufacturer, suspending the order until things, you know, may or may not stabilize. You know, that's the risk that we take. You know, keep in mind that this vehicle is replacing and has a Leaf Vac component. Our leaf equipment that we are replacing with this vehicle is at its life expectancy. We've already stretched this. If you look back, we were planning on having that in the leaf collection season of '21. Now we're likely, hopefully, going to have it in '23, but that's a question mark. So we're really rolling the dice by stretching our equipment even farther out. And if we wanted to replace that equipment in kind, we would more than likely be in the same boat because the inventory of equipment on the ground is basically obsolete.
What components are we waiting for specifically that are causing this delay?
So kind of unique to this situation, we are not waiting for any of the components as far as the equipment build goes. We are waiting for the actual cab chassis. Monroe equipment, that's the other component to this. If the board were to choose to not move forward this tonight, the equipment for the build has already been purchased and is on the ground, so we would be on the hook to pay for that equipment. So at some point in time, we would still have to furnish and build a truck. Again, we could postpone that, but we would be on the hook to pay for those costs as that equipment's already on the ground.
And how much is that?
It's roughly about $320,000.
So Mark and I talked about this at length earlier tonight as well, anticipating these types of comments. You, the board, like with everything, we have a decision. You could either do this, or you could pause it, or cancel the order, right? That would still be our option. We would take possession of $300,000 of equipment that we wouldn't use then, or maybe there's some way we could use it on an old. And then when the time came to purchase a new Peterbilt, we would get in line behind everybody else, which you had told me earlier, a brand-new order submitted today, they were quoting December of '23?
Twenty four, it would be '24. Peterbilt is on a three-year backlog right now. To give perspective, Freightliner is another manufacturer. They're at a 2025 build date right now.
So putting this thing aside, one of the things that you and I and Jeff were touching on real quick was we need to look at purchasing for next year, for the year after. What do we need to do to maintenance cycles, knowing that we're going to need to up our game on maintenance of existing vehicles to make those last extra long? Until the dealerships in our town are full again with, you know, trucks in the parking lot, like I've seen out on the east side of town, this is going to be the world that we're in. And you can see when you drive by there, there's just, it's half empty.
In my day job, we've had three trucks on order for 24 months, and the order was just canceled. They were just like, eh, we're not getting into you. Good luck. Find something else. So in addition to, I think, looking out at maintenance schedules, I think, I don't know what the financial mechanism might need to be for the board, but to be able to make an unexpected purchase if we look out the next two years, three years, five years of equipment replacement. So when a truck does become available, or a piece of equipment is available and in stock, that we have the flexibility or allow staff the flexibility to go ahead and make that purchase, should that be necessary, if that makes sense? So that a vehicle that maybe we're anticipating replacing next year or the year after in your equipment cycle, if we have enough flexibility if and when they become available, because as you know, sometimes that supply chain changes up, where all of a sudden there's a truck available, and if you have the money, first person gets it. I think that might be something for staff to look at and just make sure we are in position to move when we can on things that we know we're going to need to replace. So we're not stuck this fall with Youngerman and Merzak raking everybody's leaves off the street into the back of a truck.
They'll do it. And, yeah.
To that point, you need to make the decision now. Like, it's not, you don't have time to wait for a board meeting. They don't have to, they don't have time to poll the board. You need to be able to just react and do it right now. It's first come, first served, and if you don't answer, the next guy down the line does, and you've lost the opportunity. So I agree with Tom that I think it's really important that as a board, we provide you guys with the tools to be able to do that going forward.
And Jeff and Laura?
We can cross our Ts and dot our Is in the boardroom later.
Right. I think Jeff and Laura could look at the ordinance on, you know, Jeff's approval level and what that would mean if there's some, we'll figure it out. To make sure that they have that flexibility in a very rare instance.
Yeah, and maybe it's specifically related to vehicle acquisition.
Okay.
There's some.
I think it's amazing that, I'm going to go back to the contracts that I've signed and say, hey, I want an extra 10% or something. They would laugh me out of the building.
Yes, we do it, I have to be honest, in my day job, we do it on a regular basis. We have customers cut us POs that are due in December, and a week before manufacturing, we will reprice your job and advise you of the current cost for that product, and you'll issue us a new PO. You'll update your purchase order to the current costs. It's just the market we live in. I can't predict what I'm going to pay for materials six months from now. But you want to make sure I have the materials, and you want to make sure that I can do the job in that time. This is what's required. So we do it, I mean, it's a daily occurrence for us to be revising customers' POs.
I live in a world of GMPs, Guaranteed Maximum Pricing.
You should be in a different world.
Apparently I should, because apparently money grows on trees.
I don't know that it grows on trees, but again, unfortunately, this circumstance is not staff-driven. It's not staff negligence. Everyone's doing their job and doing their due diligence. It's just painful.
Well, and part of the reason why I want to talk with Mark, and I appreciate this conversation, is that staff looked at, has looked at all the options. I mean, there's, we do have options. We don't have to just take increases. And in the future, when there's situations when we don't need the vehicle, when the current one will do for several years, we won't be buying it right now because now is not the best time, so.
Well, anymore, I think we're living in a society where post-pandemic, they're using it as an excuse for increasing pricing arbitrarily and giving you shitty customer service. And you can print that one, John.
Director Wolf, I do have a question for you about the actual model that we've ordered. I read they went from that 348 to 548. They've discontinued the three forty-eight, and now the current model is five forty-eight. Are there any additional amenities onto this new model?
No, the five forty, the model change was something that was in their original scope of layout for, for, to take place anyways. Basically, the way to put it is, we currently run three forty-eight models today is what we have currently with our Peterbilt existing trucks. The five forty-eight is just a really, a slight difference in the cab configuration and a few other small amenities. The, the basic components of the truck, the frame, the engine, transmission, drivetrain, are all consistent in both models. So there's very little separation, and the, the, the model change, I think, is what you're getting at, did not really influence the price increase, no.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, from a maintenance standpoint, we're in the same boat. We're similar powertrain, everything, so maintenance and parts and things like that.
It's exactly the same.
Perfect. That's great.
And this is one of the trucks that's replacing the, the older model where we've got the staff on the back of the, the truck sitting back there with the vacuum, right?
Yes, for that component, it is replacing that piece of equipment. This truck is not replacing a current vehicle, though. This is an additional equipment request that the board approved. But yes, it is replacing that specific piece of equipment again, as this vehicle's multifaceted with different attachments.
And how many different attachments? And what are the attachments?
There's five different attachments for this vehicle. One is a dump body for general material hauling, a V-box for winter operations, a flatbed for hauling of materials, the Leaf Vac component, and forgetting one, the anti-icing tank for winter operations as well for anti-icing.
So in the past, we would purchase five different vehicles for these tasks, and we have one of these swap loaders now.
Correct.
And it, it works great. So instead of paying, paying for cabin chassis five times over, you pay for the cabin chassis once, and then you swap off the attachments as you need them. It's, it's a great cost savings.
This is very comparable to the vehicle that was at the Halloween safety event, the toucher truck?
Exactly the same.
Correct.
Okay.
And starting next year, you'd be able to store all of those things inside year-round, correct?
Correct.
Great. All right.
Motion to approve.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Trusty Marisack?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Baumann?
Yes.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
That's a strong six to zero. I'm just kidding. All right, items for discussion this evening is a liquor license request for a new restaurant located at La Chiquita Retail Center. And Sonia?
Um, yes, we have Mr. Paso here. I can kind of talk you through it, but he's looking at opening a restaurant at the La Chiquita Retail Center, and he would be looking to get a liquor license to go with it, so he can walk through what he's looking at doing and looking for your feedback.
Go ahead. If you can come down to the microphone here, you can sit down if you'd like, or raise it and stand if you'd like, and just state your name.
Hi, everybody. My name is Dean Casso, and this is my business partner, Kevin Ross. And I am the turnover of Excalibur at Nasquille. I've had Excalibur for twenty-three years now, and I do a lot of business with Montgomery. I love, I love you guys, the fire department, Chief Myers, and everybody else who knows you. But what I want to do here is, I want to, I wanted to do something different. I wanted to do a Nathan's hot dog and Chicago style hot dog with, with hot, with hot soup and cold sandwiches and like that. And I needed the liquor license because naturally I wanted to put gaming machines in there too. That's, I don't think, I hate to be every question, I mean, I have a lot of the stipulations around Montgomery, but I know, I, I think I have credit where it's like, I got to a certain percentage of food and then whatever else you could.
Yeah, question, do you know roughly how much space you'd be leasing in this building? How big is your unit?
Uh, the unit is, let me think, it's, it's the end unit, the patio front. It's fifteen, like, fifteen forty-eight, the address. It's, it's over, it's over, I think it's two thousand square foot.
Okay. So just a standard, like, one bay inside that building?
Yeah. It's the last unit going to the south.
Okay. Questions for the board?
I'll begin, as usual, for Douglas Road. So I am someone who is usually a very hard no on any additional liquor licenses in the, in the Douglas Road corridor, because we do have a lot there, and of course, we have a lot of people who want to bring the gaming in. Our most recent requests have been for what I would call gaming parlors, which I was like, no, absolutely not. While I'm not overly excited that you want to put the gaming in, I know you do, you know.
Yeah.
It's, it is what it is. It's auto, it's not something I can, you know, say, well, no, I don't want that. I'm not excited about that part, but I am much more comfortable with this type of license where it's more of the restaurant license, where it's the fifty percent comes from your food sales. So I will actually be in support of this one.
I mean, I, I, I want to do, nobody has, I don't, I don't care, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with all of it. I mean, it's followed all the time. Nobody does a Nathan hot dog, you know, for carryout or pickup or dining or anything like that. It's all dinner, you know, it's, I, the guy who runs the Nathan hot dog, they're delicious, that's Chicago's hot dog. I know Portillo has got hot dog, a couple of those places that are hot dog, but it's not going to be like this. The gaming is because, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to lie, I mean, I want to bring the gaming. It'll help, because, you know, I'm a business owner right now. I mean, my restaurant happened in twenty-two years, it's been the last, the worst four years I've ever had. But it wasn't for my gaming, I'd be shut down right now, because my food prices, what everybody knows. You know, I go to the grocery store, my food prices are outrageous. You got to migrate the pizza by ten dollars, I mean, by ten cents, they're like, oh, this is bigger than twenty-one, or this is one thirty. You know, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's tough to make a decision, it's open. I mean, if, if you don't agree with that, I understand, you know, I just don't think.
Will you be keeping?
I don't give a chief Myers a deal on pizza.
Will you be keeping your other store open? Uh, Pizza Caccino, will you be keeping that one open as well?
I'm sorry about that.
Will you be keeping Pizza Caccino open as well?
For pizzas and everything.
Good.
So you have gaming currently, unless we go, and a liquor license and all that?
Yeah, I have a license, I have gaming there and everything. It, it isn't, you know, everybody's got the perception that the gaming is going to bring in their craft, it's going to bring their garbage, it doesn't.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's old, elderly people mostly, people that, you know, they just want to relax and, and bring. I believe that people come in with their children, and they sit down to eat, and then their parents go and camp all over it. I, I can't do without gaming, you know, it's, it's not.
Yeah, helps pay rent.
Restaurants, I've heard of this, I've had four restaurants. I closed down Lasco, I closed down Bear Parkland, and I closed down, uh, uh, Bloomingdale. I closed, I closed, I closed for it, that was in the last three years, you know, it's, I'm prepping for COVID, and then, you know. Yeah, thank God this place helped me because it has carryout and delivery going out here.
So I have a question. By the way, Pizza Caccino's fantastic.
Yeah.
Longtime customer. I mean, it's in the wrong town, right?
Yeah.
But.
I, I, I have to cross over to the other side of thirty. I'm not happy about that, but, you know.
Well, that building has two units, right?
So I just want to be clear, you're opening a restaurant that's going to have some gaming.
Yeah.
Correct, right? The focus is it's the restaurant and it's going to have gaming. It's not a gaming parlor that's going to serve food. It's a restaurant.
That's right, that's going to have gaming. The reason why I want hot dogs and, what do you call it, sandwiches and soups and something like that, and the Nathan hot dog is a pretty big, you know, it's like a, a, a clique, you know, people, Nathan hot dogs, you know, I could put that out there and publish it. And the reason why I want to do it that way is because I can't, honestly, I can't afford to put all the ancil system in to do a full-blown, you know, steamers and, I mean, deep fryers and ovens and stuff like that, that's four, five hundred thousand dollars. You know, if I had to take my restaurant and do it again, especially with the prices right now, like you guys were talking about pricing now, it's, it, it would kill me. So here's what I would be doing. It would be steam tables, hot tables, coolers, and, uh, display cases. Like, it'll be, it'll be a restaurant. It's not going to be a gaming parlor. It's going to be a restaurant with gaming to help me, and the alcohol is a plus, which you know, the gaming parlors, how many drinks? You know, I think I, I've had the gaming for years now, and I, I think my liquor bill for a month has been two hundred dollars. You know, that's how much alcohol is up. It's mostly, you know, food and, oh, let me play. And I love about my pizza parlor is because they sit down and play all night. But, I mean, if you would consider it, I appreciate it, if you, if you're totally against it, no big deal, I can understand. You know, I understand what's going on in the building and everything, but.
Yeah.
I would, I would like it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him? Well, he's, well, he's up here.
Yeah, um, are we going to see the, the plans and development before the next actual request for the liquor license?
Well, if we could do that, yeah, if we probably had, had, you know, if we take a sort of, what about liquor?
I'm actually the general contractor.
Yep.
So I would be actually the one.
Perfect. Okay. Any other questions?
I'm in favor.
So when these come before us, we have, we usually have our three choices. Not interested, and we need more information, or we're interested. And we'd like, you know, the chief to kind of work through things. Where are we sitting? Proceed.
Cautiously proceed, just because from my personal perspective, I've had, we've had two or three requests that have come through that we've said no. Again, it's mostly been bar with gaming or gaming catering some food. So I, even though you have a great Italian beef pizza, it's wonderful. Um, I, you know, be, I want to be cautious on my integrity and, and who I'm voting yes for when I voted no in the past. So I really want to cautiously make sure to see what this restaurant portion looks like that gaming is being added to, that's all.
I mean, if we get the plans in and then come back to you guys and see what you say?
Yeah, let's finish going around real quick. Where are you at? Proceed, proceed?
Proceed.
So here, here's what I think makes sense. There's overwhelming support to do this. I think we would like to see like a floor plan and kind of what you're planning on doing. If you can have that in when we approve the ordinance, I think that would be helpful to you. The earliest that could be is in two weeks, and it could be later, depending on whatever it is your timeline is. But yeah, I don't, I don't think, I think, the one thing that I've always said about these, and we've approved G licenses before, is that we, we've, for four or five years now, have, we strive to have restaurants that also happen to have gaming, not gaming parlors that serve some chips and, you know, and whatnot. So I appreciate, I appreciate your dialogue tonight, so I think, I think we should be good.
Thank you, I appreciate it now. Give that to you then, after, I mean, if you're playing school.
Yes, so you can work with Sonia and, and the chief, and we'll get everything squared away.
All right.
Awesome. Thanks for coming.
Really appreciate it. Really appreciate it, consideration.
Thank you. All right, just for fun, I'm going to go under nuh, unfinished. Would like to ask our department heads that are here this evening if they have any specific updates. I didn't tell you that, but I was just going to ask. So, because there's various things that are happening, so the one thing that, and somebody may ask about it, is just a status update on the Public Works Building. And anything else from your department?
That's, that's the most thrilling thing we have going right now.
And not everything from your department.
Okay, we'll stay with just the building. Building progress is moving along well. Right now, the pre-cast is all completed, so we're a hundred percent erection on the pre-cast. Masons are onsite, steel bar joists are all complete and set. So it's moving along, a multitude of different contractors on the site. RCM on the project is doing a great job of pushing the schedule each and every day to try and keep things moving along. So if you haven't driven by, I suggest you do. It's really taken shape. It's, it's a beautiful building. The pre-cast came out really nice. We had almost no issues as far as any type of damages to the panels or anything, so it's, it's going along well.
Perfect. And what is the current, well, I was going to ask you completion date, but what is the current supply shortage that you're hitting?
Uh, there's a cement shortage. That's a major, majorly affecting the project. We are kind of at a standstill with concrete at the moment. As the masons finish up and the excavators continue in to backfill the interior of the building, though, we'll be starting to prep for the areas. It's probably more than likely going to affect the vehicle storage and the vehicle maintenance base the most. The interior shop spaces are smaller, so it's easier to get smaller yardages, if that makes sense, than it is the larger volumes. Right now, the ready-mix companies are requesting that contractors forecast two weeks in advance for their, for what their requirement or what their needs are going to be. And from what I'm hearing, they're canceling those at zero to little notice, so.
Yeah, and if we had to pay a premium for concrete at all?
We have not to this point, only because a lot of our, the foundations all took place before the cement shortage impacted us. But I do, I don't want to say anticipate, but I do, you know, foresee that there's a chance we may have some increases as far as the concrete goes. But we're a little ways away from that yet, so I want to not jump to conclusions.
I've heard that the premium is right now like at thirty percent, depending on who you talk to and when you need it.
How can we go through a cement increase when we signed a guaranteed maximum price contract with the general contractor?
The, the contractor that, the subcontractors don't have a GMP with Camosi. So that will be something that we'll go back and we'll look at. And again, these are increases that, you know, I think in, in our best judgment are unforeseen, and it's unrealistic for contractors to absorb some of these costs. But again, we'll look at those to, before we get to that point, and we haven't been hit with any increases yet. So before we jump to any conclusions.
We're, we're not in the, the business of giving out top taxpayer dollars for free. We sat and had Camosi in that chair, and we asked him these questions about are there going to be any price increases? He said, no, go back and watch the meeting.
No, it's a point, it's a point taken.
Yes.
I mean, it's not incorrect, and, and let's see what happens with the concrete increases, or any sort of increase.
Then that's on Camosi. That's not on the Village of Montgomery. That's why we, we entered into a guaranteed maximum price contract with that general contractor.
Understood.
All right. Anything else on the Public Works Building? Chris, anything on the IRP this year?
Uh, they finished paving the last street last week on Nell Road, so all of the paving is a hundred percent complete. There's still some striping that remains, and then they need to finish the landscaping on Ashland Avenue. Otherwise, the project is, you know, coming to a close.
Perfect. All right, Sonia?
Bill Tyers is wrapping up, so that's kind of our big one finishing up, so they're hoping to be done in the next week. And then we've also, biggest news probably, we got the actual formal building permit submittal for Freddie's Steakhouse. They're going in over there at the corner of Ogden and Route Thirty, so those plans are under review right now.
Perfect. All right, Pete?
We have our first pre-hearing for Lake Michigan allocation tomorrow.
Awesome. What time?
Eleven o'clock, I believe, or is it ten? Ten o'clock.
Perfect. Is that going to be televised on local TV or?
No, it will be closed circuit at our office, so.
Perfect. All right, chief? Anything? Yeah. That, that much, huh?
So I know some of you don't participate this weekend, and first of all, I'd like to say that it's management, controlling director, all that stuff. But when I have staff like, remember Liz Bellbo and Eda and Armando and Ish, it makes my job so much easier. So this weekend was demonstrated a little bit of that whole thing. I can only say that I know anyone here that went and enjoyed it, said it was fantastic. It was. It was one of, uh, it was probably the biggest one we had, where I think someone made three, four dollars. And I can't take the entire of that credit. With Liz Bellbo, and his editor, a little bit of Jake Limes, and a few people in this room. Liz is the one that organizes Rex's album, Mark, his staff, because the person was on there, the guy was on there, and they helped one. And they brought all the other people from this community out there. It was beautiful, man. The weather was gorgeous. I appreciate all of this help. I like that, that is it.
It was beautiful.
It was.
Awesome. Anything?
I do just want to say, come back up to the, I think what you did after our last meeting was a wonderful gesture, taking the residents up to the community room, having some time with them. I, I had some feedback, and I think it was really appreciated, and I think it was a lot of calming reassurance from you to have that conversation with them. So yes, your staff did wonderful at the Halloween event yesterday, but I think that gesture too, after our last meeting, was, was tremendous on your part, so.
I could, if you want a little follow-up, that I did have a meeting with the management staff of the community. A couple of big weeks came up from Michigan, actually, with one of the CEO, however you want to call it, his assistant, and then overall security manager. Just to quell some of the rumors, they never lowered their score. Matter of fact, that apartment complex still has the highest standard for allowing people to actually rent there. They ensure that they are implementing some security measures we spoke of, more cameras, and I should talk about hiring the security staff out there. They were very, and, and cooperative, like, a collaborative effort in what they're doing. We talked about, I know we talked about a, a community-wide leasing, trying to free housing, rental agreement, whatever I'm talking about. I know that we reviewed a lot of these documents from back, people from two thousand eighteen, I can, so I can't put that together. I am attorney Julian, did review that lease, and it does have those factors in there. As a matter of fact, the only thing that we're missing was the information to maybe remove some of those people. So we've actually built a system out to assist them in getting that information quick enough so they can take action as a part. Now, at least, I guess it didn't go off our.
It's a beautiful facility. And I, I think we have their commitment and, and, and your support for making sure that this type of thing is a one and done, doesn't happen again in our community. To, I mean, we can't control that, obviously, but do all the steps possible that we should be doing and they should be doing. So, I appreciate it.
Just like a, you, a normal business, say Walmart or someone, is there any sort of enforcement agreement we can enter into with Montgomery Place Apartments where the police can go police the, the parking lots and things and enforce?
We do have certain agreements for private parking now, currently within the village. I don't think we need that yet because with the parking complex, they can institute their own, like, we, we spoke of the registration process. They can have their own vehicle registration process, their own toll company. They just need to enact those things, which they said they're going, they're looking at now, just all the vehicles and do their own tolling. We did approach them and tell them never time to roll in there. It does seem like it's a capacity. So, they're looking at that. I would rather they do it, so we don't pay out the toll in the live room.
Or, and the staff time?
As, as part of their rental agreement, do they have verbiage in their rental agreement that states that if I'm in a two-bedroom house, I can't have eight people? And is it a limiting?
Yes, they do. Actually, we spoke of that. And they have a system in place of going in and checking those residents. When they go in, and they twice a year, I think, they check their HVAC systems. But then, they didn't tell us, there has been times where we'll walk in, it's supposed to be two people occupying a two-bedroom apartment, and there's six beds there. So, they take action about that. It alleviates our problems. It helps us with, you know, the amount of people that are living there, domestic situations. So, they're already jumping on those little things. They, I do have those in place. I think their biggest problem was the communication to their tenants and their organizational.
Perfect.
Thanks for, for working through that, chief. Have they put any timeframe to the enhancements that they've talked about from security companies, security cameras, any of that?
No, but I will be speaking with one of the management people at the park. We already made an agreement, an agreement that I will give you certain information. We will share that. So, I will follow up on them and hopefully maybe that's my problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. All right. Christina, anything? Perfect. Jeff?
Just say that staff did finance director interviews last week. We have narrowed it down to two finalists. And so, I'll be reaching out to you to look for a date, hopefully next week, to get this group together to interview the finalists. So, that's why I'm reaching out to see.
Perfect. All right. Anything new or unfinished from the board? Anybody got anything?
Growing pains. We, we go through them. Big stuff going on at Orchard and 30. Signs of what's to come, right? We go, go through this pain now for the benefits of what it's going to.
To be like. I saw something yesterday that I just, I, there was a car that did something, and I'm just like, no, 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 no. Don't do it. Don't do it. Probably six cars between myself going, what direction am I going? East on 30, towards Orchard Road. And there was about six cars between me and where the left, that small left turn lane started. And I saw a car two, two behind me pull out onto that other direction of traffic to, to go up there. And I just like, no, 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 don't do it. So, just to stress, anybody that's watching, just use caution, be patient over there. It's painful now, but it's going to get better. So.
It's going to be even more painful, like, this week, right?
Yeah, this weekend, they're really starting.
They're doing the grinding and paving. This morning, I noticed that they were already doing some of the grinding. And it did slow down quite a bit. But again, to your point, we've been complaining about this for a long time. And the fix is, there's a little bit of light at the, twinkling down at the end of the tunnel. We just need to tough it out for a little while longer. It should get much better.
And, and in, sorry.
Go, go ahead.
And in the near term, it's finishing this Band-Aid project, $2 million Band-Aid project, or more. That's what it was years ago. But just last week, Representative Wheeler and I were on a call with IDOT. IDOT's planning folks and folks from the Illinois House as well, just to walk through kind of how roads are ranked in, because we're on the border of two different districts. So, we asked a ton of questions. They did inform us that the Phase 2, which we all know from working with Pete, is the final engineering for the ultimate design. The Phase 2 funding is included in this NYPD that, that IDOT's working under. We are following up to see exactly when that's going to kick off. But they do have $6 million budgeted for design and some land acquisition for that ultimate intersection. And once we get that, then we can lobby very hard for, because then we'll know what the total cost is for the intersection. We can lobby for the Phase 3, which is the construction cost. But in my experience, they don't fund Phase 2s lightly when they don't have an idea that they might, they don't have funding for Phase 3. But we can work on it. Once we have a dollar amount, then we know how much to ask for.
So, what you're saying is we need to continue to complain? Because the squeaky wheel gets grease.
No, not actually with transportation planning anymore. Now that they're going to kick off the Phase 2, it's an 18-month to 24 months, maybe even a little bit more if you're doing some land act, process to get through that. So, yeah. But yes, you can continue to talk about it.
Okay.
You have all of our approval to talk about it.
I was just going to say that what Trusty Baumann said, I witnessed it probably five or six times, including some potential head-on collisions where the vehicles traveling west had to stop or slow down so these idiots could come back in and.
Non-resident.
So, it's dangerous.
Probably.
Yeah, they must be from another neighboring town.
All right. Anything else incriminating anybody has to offer? All right. Thanks for indulging in that a little bit.
Sure. I apologize. I do have one thing. The cemetery walk was last Wednesday. And again, much like the Halloween Safety Event, the weather has been on our side. The chief and I were actually talking about how favorable the weather has been this year for many of our events, with the exception of Saturday of Montgomery Fest. And Wednesday night was beautiful. Numbers of people were a little bit down, but we've not had it for two years, I think, now. But again, the people that come, and it's such a fantastic event. So, thank you to Historical Preservation for putting it together. Debbie Buchanan specifically was working on the research and stuff. Pete and I were talking before the meeting. It's just such an educational time to learn about these folks that are there and learn their stories. So, again, thank you. And thank you for coming out and helping. And Steve came out and helped as well with doing some guiding. So, thank you.
Perfect. All right. Future meetings. You can see there, we are canceling the committee of the whole meeting for next Tuesday and the intergovernmental for next Monday. So, we will have the board meeting in two weeks from today at 7:00 PM. Motion adjourned?
So moved.
Call roll?
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Merzak?
Yes.
Trusty Betzinger?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Spurling?
Yes.
Trusty Baumann?
All right. Rejourn. Thank you.